Is it? Oh, okay, good. All right, listen, you got that, uh, Luis?
What is this?
It's in the student recognition. It's like after the moment of silence. Yeah, I hope if he commits, he can. We're gonna get you out of here in one second. You guys, where's Ellen? Is Ellen back there? Yeah, she's not feeling well. She's definitely not gonna. I saw you writing the script. Good evening. Good evening. I'd like to call to order, uh, this meeting of the Rochester City School District Board of Education. Uh, we begin these meetings traditionally with an act of reverence. Uh, I'm calling it as well a moment of silence. And we also, of course, uh, pledge, who we do the pledge of allegiance. I'd ask, um, I'm going to ask Commissioner, uh, uh, Powell to do the, uh, pledge of allegiance because of, uh, the timing of the Memorial Day holiday and everyone, as everyone knows, she is a longstanding member of the military. Um, I'm also asking that before the pledge of allegiance, that we have a moment of silence for Kathleen Perry, uh, a teacher, uh, in the Rochester City School District.
The pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As some of you may know, our president, Malik Evans, is away on his honeymoon with his new bride, Shawanda Evans, so we congratulate him and, uh, wish and pray for a safe return. Additionally, as part of, uh, the beginning, part of our meetings, we, uh, review our minutes, um, from prior meetings. It just so happens tonight, we have, uh, in our packet, a number of minutes. One from, a set of minutes from April the 27th, April the 28th, May the 5th, May the 7th, and May the 19th. Once again, my colleagues were provided advanced copies of these minutes. These minutes are also available for your public review, I believe, on our website. Uh, at this particular time, I'd ask for a moment, a motion to approve these minutes as drafted.
So moved.
Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? There being no opposition, those minutes of April the 27th, April the 28th, May the 5th, May the 7th, and May the 9th are adopted. Uh, you all know, at this, uh, portion of our meeting, we give recognition to students. Uh, they are, in fact, the reason why we all are here. Uh, and so I'd ask my colleagues to, and the superintendent as well, to, uh, go down to the podium down there, and we're going to provide some recognition to our exemplary students. Thank you. I have the pleasure and the blessing of, uh, recognizing the first student. And before I want to, before I do that, I want to give special recognition to Commissioner Brennan, who, uh, was helpful. He's looking surprised, because he didn't know I was gonna say this, who was, uh, helpful and instrumental in, in identifying and, uh, of course, the board staff had a lot to do with this. But Commissioner Brennan may recall, we, we did some investigating in terms of, uh, the various students that are deserving of these high academic honors that we give our students. And, and we realized that, uh, one student got an award, but perhaps another student was equally deserving. And it's, uh, a bit of an ironic twist, twist, but anybody who knows Elliot's family knows that this is no surprise to, to his family. He is a hard-working student, uh, from great parents. One of them just happens to be our, uh, school board commissioner, uh, Commissioner Williams. Uh, but his mom, uh, and I know she doesn't want me to do this, but his mom is a distinguished judge in our community, uh, Judge Teresa Johnson. And, uh, we are blessed to have them in our community, and we are even more blessed to have, uh, their young son, Elliot, as, uh, the recipient of this award. Elliot is currently a sophomore at, uh, Wilson, where my kids went, go Wilson. That's right, you go woo! Uh, he is in the IB program. His favorite subjects are chemistry and computer programming. He is a member of the Wilson's Robotics Team. Commissioner Williams and I and, and the superintendent saw those teams, I think it was at RIT, uh, an amazing, an amazing show. Uh, the X-Cats, I think, is what they call themselves. Elliot, where are you? Where are you? Oh, you're over there. Um, Elliot was recently inducted into the Latin Honor Society. All right, now you can applaud at any time, because this is all good stuff. He was a people-to-people, come on up, Elliot, come on up. Uh, he was a people-to-people ambassador, student ambassador. He traveled to Fiji. You go, boy! He went to New Zealand, Australia, wonderful stuff, man. I wish I could've went to Australia. He is also a graduate of the University of Rochester Young Entrepreneur Academy, where he helped develop a portable guitar effect for electric guitars. Woo! After high school, Elliot plans to get his master's degree in mechanical engineering. Elliot, congratulations, well done. Now, I have asked, I have asked Commissioner Campos, and she has graciously agreed to present our next award. And the reason why I asked Commissioner Campos to do this is she has really been the, the major proponent, uh, of CTE. Uh, and, uh, we are recognizing a special student today, and I thought no better person to do that than Commissioner Campos.
This is a certificate of achievement, we'll better bring that down a little bit, certificate of achievement for Louis Martel. This is absolutely a phenomenal award that he won. We're, this is the first time we're recognizing an Edison Applied Tech CTE student for his accomplishments in the Skills USA Competition, which is a CTE organization that serves students who are preparing for careers in trade, technical, and skilled services occupations. On April 2nd, 2009, masonry students from all over New York State competed in the New York State Skills USA Masonry Competition at the Syracuse On Center. And the competition is sponsored and judged by the Bricklayers Union Local Number Three. And the students took a written exam and built a composite brick and block project. Two students from Edison of Applied Technology, Louis Martel and Chris White, competed. Edison School of Applied Technology is proud to announce that senior Louis Martel was crowned the Skills USA New York State Masonry Champion. And Louis has also been invited to represent New York State at the National Competition in Kansas City, Missouri. What a phenomenal accomplishment. So this certificate of achievement says that Louis Martel, presented by the Board of Education and Superintendent of Schools, in honor and recognition as the Skills USA New York State Masonry Champion. And at this point, I'd like to welcome up Bev. I don't, do I see her? She'd like to say some words and invite some people up, but let's give Louis some appreciation.
Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Bev Gashu, and I'm part of the Teaching and Learning Department CTE team. And I would like to call up Louis Martel, if you would please come up to the podium, along with Louis's parents, Mr. and Mrs. Rosario. And I'd also like to call up Mr. Matt Laneyak, Principal of Edison Applied Technology, along with Louis's masonry teacher, Frank Arena.
I'll be very fast. I know Mr. Arena has a few words, but, uh, amazing thing about Louis, seven months ago, he thought he was going to go in the field of automotive, um, in the automotive industry, and then he switched actually to the masonry program. But if you want to see Louis's work, swing by 166 Polaris Street, because that's the location of our house building project. And, um, hopefully this week, the basement actually goes in, so you can see just what Louis, uh, is able to accomplish in a week. So swing by, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Arena.
You teach because you have a passion for it and you love it, and you don't expect to get any honors. And when one of your students achieves something like this, you're just floored by it. And I'm very, very proud. He worked hard.
By the way, I would just mention, we realize that these are just, um, two of many, many hundreds of students that provide us, every day, provide us reasons to be proud. Uh, and I know Malik did not give me the directive to say this, but we're always looking for students to recognize, if you all, since we have such a packed house today, the other thing that we'd like you to do is bring back to the board, Sinead's gonna kill me for this, any examples you have, and I know there are lots of them, so we can't get everybody up here, of students who make us proud. We would encourage you to do that. Thank you very much. At, at this particular point, um, of our agenda, we are going to be, um, allowing speakers to address the board who have items on the agenda. Ms. Lee, do you have that list? Would you do me a favor? Would you mind calling up a list? I know I didn't actually do that in advance, but would you mind doing that? Now, now, let me just say as a preliminary matter, uh, we have a lot of speakers speaking today, and, um, we're going to ask, given the number of speakers, there are specific bylaws that say, if you have a given number of speakers, um, you have to reduce the time allotted. Normally, you all know, you get three minutes, but given the number of speakers, and they cover two pages for us, I think it's, uh, over forty to fifty speakers, is that right, Ms. Lee? About sixty speakers. We have to limit, according to our bylaws, the amount of time. And I realize that three minutes is not enough, and two minutes is not enough. But if you believe in the principle of democracy whereby we are here to listen to everyone, you'll understand why you have to stop at two minutes. This is not about not wanting to hear what you have to say, it's about wanting to hear what everybody has to say. So I would ask that you respect that time limit. If you feel that you're about to go over the time limit and, and, uh, and you'll know that by a buzzer will go off. We would ask that you summarize your remarks and allow the next person to have their opportunity at the podium. I would appreciate the respect that you give to that rule. Thank you. And so we begin with Denzel Cox. Denzel Cox?
High, tan, hut. Dress, center dress. Ready, front. Spider.
Kaylee, Kaylee Nesmith, and then following Ms. Nesmith, Philip Slattery. Kaylee Nesmith, and following Ms. Nesmith, Philip Slattery.
Hello. My name is Kaylee Nesmith. I represent Thomas Jefferson High School. I'm here to talk about the cuts that are being made for music and band classes. It really hurts me to go back to school and think about my class being taken away. I've been playing my violin in the class with my teacher, Ms. Savini, for three years. In those three years' experiences, I've experienced great enjoyment, passion, and expression. My class gives me originality and the power to believe that I can do anything that I want. Let me take this paper out real quick. Bear with me. I really don't understand what makes math music class so different from other classes like math, with their note takings and experiments. Is it the visual effects, as I call them, that makes it so different? Music class is just as hard as the other ones. You have to work to achieve what you want to do. Does the creative nift make it harder? No, I don't believe so. Music class is just as hard as being a math class. You must work together just the way you do with experiments. I believe that the expression and the productiveness in math and in music are just as equal. Taking away music class would take away the confidence that these childrens have gained between these walls, where they learned that they could express themselves in more than one way. And then with that, they would lose the confidence to achieve what they want to in other classes. Thank you.
Philip Slattery, and then he will be followed by Sophie Gallivan. Let me apologize if I mispronounce folks' names, that's not my intention. Mr. Slattery?
Good evening. My name is Philip Slattery. I am currently eleven years old and a sixth grade major achievement program student at, at Theodore Roosevelt School Number Forty-Three. I am a standard bearer there as well. The reason I am here tonight is to speak to you as the decision-maker for not only my education, my eight-year-old sister, Victoria, education, but the other fourteen thousand children in this city to which you were elected to serve. There is no way I would be as successful as I am without my mother's support and that of the wonderful and beneficial music, man, art, and physical education, specially trained and certified teachers I have had at both School Number Thirty and Forty-Three. It has been important to me and my sister and my fellow classmates to have a well-rounded curriculum since kindergarten. Because of this basic foundation, I have taken these skills to be an Eastman Parkway Scholarship recipient. How would you like to enjoy your day not to be able to appreciate any music or art with the opportunity for physical education? Probably not any more than me, Victoria, and the many signatures of School Number Forty-Three, who want as good, if not a better, education than our suburban counterparts' argument. If you decide to neglect my future and the rest of us by putting us in classrooms too small for so many students to learn not only the basics, but the essentials of fine living such as music, art, band, and physical education, I would highly recommend you consider the outcome of that decision. Thank you for doing what is right and fair and keeping all students, kindergarten through twelfth grade, in music, band, and art, and physical education with the great certified teachers we already have. Also, I have the signatures of my fellow schoolmates, two hundred sixty-nine of them, who are also considered... them who are also concerned and interested in keeping music, band, art, physical education, and great libraries in all of our schools.
Thank you very much, Mr. Slattery. Sophie Gallivan filed by Megan Gilfoyle. Ms. Gallivan?
Good evening. My name is Sophie Gallivan, and I am a seventh grade drama major at School of the Arts. I am here to express my feelings and give my opinion on SOTA staff being cut. SOTA is one of Rochester's highest-performing schools, and it wouldn't be a great school without its staff. SOTA, SOTA is one of Rochester's highest perfor-- oh, I'm sorry. SOTA shouldn't be punished by having teachers laid off because it's teachers, it's the teachers at SOTA that teach the students how to achieve their goals academically and artistically. SOTA also needs more teachers because we require more credits than most schools to graduate. And, and also, we need art teachers to be a performing arts school. How can we, as students, learn how to use our artistic talent if we don't have teachers to teach us? I have had a very special experience with a SOTA teacher, and I would like to share it. I was recently in the show Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat. I had the role of the narrator, which I wouldn't have been chosen for if it wasn't for this special teacher. This teacher took the time out of her busy schedule and her own personal time to help me prepare for my audition. This bond I created with this teacher could disappear if she were to be cut. Many students at SOTA have had similar experiences with SOTA staff, and it would be detrimental to all students if these teachers were to be eliminated. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to voice my opinion, and I urge you to reconsider your options in our city school budget and try to find ways to save SOTA's art staff.
Thank you, Ms. Gallivan. Megan Gilfoyle. Megan Gilfoyle will be filed by Felicia Bevel. Felicia Bevel. Ms. Gilfoyle?
Hi, my name is Megan Gilfoyle, and I'm a sophomore at School of the Arts. I'm addressing the board as a worried student about the effects our forthcoming budget could have. Its layoff of more than two hundred teachers will increase class sizes that are already very large. With the experience of being a student who has participated in five student classes and twenty-four student classes, I address the board confidently in saying that the use of our seventeen point four million in stimulus money would be a fantastic use for this issue. Job positions can be eliminated, and numbers can be consolidated, but a teacher is so much more than just what their job description entails. The elimination of music, art, and physical education positions will hit much harder than an alternative, such as using our stimulus money. If anything, arts classes should continue enriching our students. Physical education programs should continue offering after-school communities, not to mention the possibility of sports scholarships to colleges. And the size of our classes should be a top priority, always working toward what can be most beneficial to our students. As a proud student, I present to you with conviction that the laying off of teachers will greatly damage our school communities, which are established as families. We must look at any alternatives. Thank you.
Thank you. Felicia Bevel, Felicia Bevel, and Chryszenzo Cipione will file Ms. Bevel.
Good evening. Upon hearing the disturbing news of several cuts within city school district music programs, frankly, I was appalled. To add insult to injury, many of the programs in question are within elementary schools, the foundation for what is already established in secondary institutions. I myself became blind flute in the fourth grade and still play to this day. I have had the wonderful opportunity of studying at the Eastman School of Music under the direction of Jan Angus, a very accomplished flautist. Every day, I eagerly await my band class over at East High School. I cannot picture what life would be like without music, maddening in the least. It has given me intense drive and focus, two important qualities that have, without question, enabled me to excel academically and gain acceptance into Columbia University with a full ride. Let me give you a little taste of what I am exposed to every day. That, my friends, is something you cannot find in a textbook or a classroom. Taking music from students is unjust, and I ask you to reconsider this difficult decision. Thank you.
Chryszenzo Cipione, he will be filed by Matthew Hoag.
Hi, my name is Chryszenzo Cipione. I'm a senior at School of the Arts and a member of Rochester Students for a Democratic Society. There are two points I would like to make. The first point is about the budget. This district received seventeen point four million dollars in federal stimulus money for the purpose of creating jobs and avoiding layoffs. Instead, Superintendent Bressard has put this money in a bank and cut two hundred and twenty-five teachers from the budget. Such a blatant misuse of funds risks the state withholding the seventeen point four million we are to receive next year. Further, Superintendent Bressard's personal staff costs the city taxpayer six million dollars. I suggest that instead of cutting teachers, the superintendent think about cutting his own expenses first. As a district student, I am offended by this budget. To cut teachers when money is available to keep them shows an absolutely disgusting disregard, not just for teachers, but for students as well. New York State estimates that there are twenty-four teachers, or twenty-four students per teacher in Rochester high schools. Cutting teachers can only make this worse by increasing class sizes and decreasing student graduation rates. The second point is that I am vehemently opposed to any change in the current policy on military recruitment. The law that this policy supposedly violates has never been tested in any court, and it is not even clear that the law has been broken. And the loss of Title I funding, five million dollars, would still cost us one million less than the superintendent's personal staff does. More importantly, capitulation to No Child Left Behind would be totally immoral. A reversed policy would violate student privacy in order to entice working-class students, often with lies, into fighting rich men's wars for profit. For this board to ignore this and the community outcry on this issue would be an insult to democracy and would dishonor this city's rich legacy of moral courage. Finally, let me say to this board, and particularly to the superintendent, you work for us, and if you are not willing to risk disobeying one of the worst laws in this country, then we are ready to show you some disobedience of our own.
Thank you. Matthew Hoag, Matthew Hoag, he will be filed by Elliot Williams. Let me take this opportunity to say, many people ask, why doesn't the board respond to these comments? For those of you who don't know, who haven't watched it on the public television and haven't participated in a board meeting, this is our time to listen. It's not like we don't care or we don't have a response. We've committed ourselves to listening to what the citizens have to say, so we sit here and listen, and we don't comment. Mr. Hoag?
Hi, my name is Matthew Howe. I'm a student of School Number Forty-two, and I play in the school band. What can music do for us and students? Music is not a non-useful thing that we can just decide we don't need. Music is more. Music is proven to be shown, can help students with behavior problems, and inspires them to do great things that'll help them choose their future. Music can express students' personality in ways words cannot. Music programs shouldn't be cut. The music programs will look good on and improve a college application. If music brings out the best of all of us, what's the use of cutting it out of our very lives? So don't.
Elliot Williams will be filed by Kira Martin. Elliot Williams? Elliot Williams to be filed by Kira Martin, and the next speaker would be Brandon Gordon. I'd ask that folks be ready to make their remarks. I'm looking for Elliot Williams, Kira Martin, or Brandon Gordon. Kira Martin? Okay, how about Kira Martin? I would ask that folks be ready to take the podium as I call out your name. Remember, we want to get in as many people as we can to hear their comments. And who would be Kira Martin?
Me.
The podium is yours, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Kira Martin. I'm a scholar at Freedom School. I'm here to tell you how much Freedom School helped me move forward in my life. Last year, I used to stay in trouble. I never felt, it never felt. I stayed either getting suspended, fighting, or kicked out of class. My GPA last year was like a zero point zero zero, and since I've been at Freedom School, my GPA has never went lower than a three point thirteen. My GPA in the fourth market period was a four point oh six, and in the fifth market period, I kind of got off track, and my GPA was three point eighty-eight. But since I've been at Freedom School, it has made me realize the person, it made me realize the person that I really am. And the people I would like to thank for making me a successful person is Kriti, Mr. Wallace, and my favorite, Ali, for making me, for making my dreams of becoming a leader come true. Thank you for everything.
Brandon Gordon, Brandon Gordon will be filed by Verna Ocasio. Mr. Gordon? Good afternoon.
My name is Brandon Gordon. I go to Freedom School. Last year, I was attending East, East High School, and I wasn't doing so well. My grade point average was a zero point zero, and now that I attend Freedom School, my grade point averages have not been lower than three point oh. They have been helping me get my work done, make sure I do my homework, and I become an active school program. And I'd just like to thank everybody at the Freedom School and Hope that I attend.
Verna Ocasio, Ocasio?
Hi, my name is Verna Ocasio, and I'm a scholar in Freedom School. And last year, my grades used to be down, and now that I went to Freedom School, I got, in my GPA, I got three point fifty, and it helped me a lot, and so it changed me, and I like the life that I'm having because it helped me with my home and stuff I've been through. I love Freedom School.
Marcus Cook, Marcus Cook filed by Broderick Johnson.
Hello. This year, ever since I've been at Freedom School, it has changed everything about me, changed the ways I've been doing in the past. And my grade point averages have been just increasing, but now I'm trying to get better in schoolwork. Freedom School has been good this year. It has, it has taught me a lot of stuff. I got to learn, learn a lot, a lot about things and made a lot of friends. Freedom School has taught us leadership and to follow our goals. It just helped us.
Broderick Johnson and Ravon, Ravon Lane? Broderick Johnson and Ravon Lane? I'd ask that you guys take the podium so we can hear what you have to say. Don't be shy.
Hi, I'm Ravon. I'm fourteen, and I go to Freedom School. Last year, I went to East, and I failed. My grade point average was zero point zero zero, and now it's a three point fourteen. Freedom School has helped me in so many ways to become a better person and stop doing the things that I was doing. And thanks to my mentors, Wallace Smith and Christine Johnson, I would like to thank them for inspiring me to come to school every day. Thank you.
Broderick Johnson gonna take the mic? He's not here? Okay. Chauncey Reed? Chauncey Reed?
Freedom School has changed us both physically and mentally. Last year, we weren't so good, but this year, they got us on the right path, and just like to thank everybody for getting us on the right path, and that's all.
Sarah Petrichik, Sarah Petrichik? I'm sorry, I probably mispronounced that name, and I'm really looking forward to you coming up here and correcting me. Petrichik? Well, we got a couple of different versions. Petrichik, thank you very much.
I'm Sarah Petrichik, and I'm from School Twelve. I am in my school's choir, band, and handbell choir, and I'm here to say that I do not think that it is right that they are cutting the band and music programs. We need music at our school to make us feel more proud and confident. If we don't feel confident, we just fall apart. Our grades will fall. I mean, honestly, I really wasn't having much fun in school until I got into my choir, and it was really, really fun, and I started getting into more activities. I guess that's about it, but I'd like to, to thank, I'd like to thank you for letting me speak and to please see what your decision is. Thank you.
Justice Lucas, Justice Lucas?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Justice Lucas, and I also attend Score Twelve, and I'm here to talk about what, what will happen if we lose our music teachers. Music also helps us learn, is, just like other people says, not, you won't find in a classroom or a textbook, but it helps us, it also helps us learn who made what music, and their music background, and their instruments, and their rhythm. And if you, and if you take away music, you are taking away a big piece of our learning and knowledge. I also would like to thank my music teacher, Ms. Biskie, for, for teaching me about music that comes from Africa and other countries, and without her, I wouldn't know as much about music as I do now. Thank you.
I want to thank all the speakers, and also I want to thank all the members of the audience for showing much appreciation and consideration for our speakers. Now, at this particular point-- Oh, yeah. Nice try, Van. Louis McCray. Louis McCray will be filed by Mary Adams. Are you Mr. McCray? How you doing? Mary Adams, I'd ask that you please get near the podium. Mr. McCray?
Well, I, I'm another student that goes to School Number Twelve, and I'm in the sixth grade, and without music, it's, it's gonna be very hard, hard to keep going through the years and stuff like that. For instance, band is like, it's an ex, it's, it can show, it can, you can use your emotions in it. You'll play an instrument, and the way you play, it's gonna be the way you feel. And all those other things like bell choir, choir, or ensemble, the other things that are at a school that help-- are at a school that help people, like, show their emotions, show what they, what they want to feel in class. Because in class, you'll do all this other stuff, but you really won't, you, you're learning stuff that, like, when you're 80 or 90, you might still be able to do. Because let's say I'm learning the piano, when I'm 80 or 90, I'm not gonna know any math.
All right now.
And, and because, like, we, I know everybody has sports and stuff like that, but with sports, you might only have to be able to do it for, like, five years, and then you have to go to something else. But music is an extension that you can do for your whole life. And with that, I would like to say that when I was young, like, maybe in second grade, I, I like, I saw the movie Drumline, and what I wanted to do was, like, I want to be in percussion. And when I went to the music teacher, I'm like, next day, I come back to my, to my mom, like, I have to wait till fourth grade. And then, and when that came, the day that we were able, I would, the papers were given out to become in band, I came right home and I told my mom, we need to go to this school at this time so I can get in band. And then, when I got in band, I just practiced. That first day, I, I just couldn't wait. And then when we got into the performances, it's like, it's like you're a superstar. Well, I would like to close that saying, please think about what you're gonna do to the music program.
Thank you. Mary Adams to be filed by Ricardo Adams. Mary Adams to be filed by Ricardo Adams. Ms. Adams?
As the first non-student speaker, I feel totally inadequate. Aren't they, aren't they incredible, our students? And I really mean that. I feel inadequate because I, I do not like to public speak. I'm not comfortable public speaking, and I'm gonna do something really risky and change what I was gonna say completely. I'm here on the military issue, and I've been here before, to speak to the commissioners and to the administration, because it's very important to me that we retain our progressive, bold policy that the board passed in 2005 that protects student privacy. There's no lack of opportunity for kids to, students to approach military recruiters if they choose, but we really need to keep our policy that puts the hands, puts that decision in the hands of our parent, of us, of our parents. But what I want to say is, that I'm changing, is, my daughter, who's a sophomore in music at, at School of the Arts, went to School 12. Are you seriously gonna cut School 12's music program? I know that's rhetorical, because you can't respond right now, but is that the truth? It's not fair that city schools face that kind of risk. School, School Number 12 has a fantastic music program and a fantastic academic program and a fantastic school community. And it's a relatively privileged school in this city. I have friends who are teachers at schools that don't have music programs, where kids can't take recorder for a year and then choose an instrument, be in the band, and then go on to soda. This is not fair. And what my prepared remarks were focused on was asking the board to be brave and to be active. The administration has certain things that they must do. You can be active, you can stand for what's right and fair. So please, vote to protect our students, vote to keep teachers in the classrooms, work toward the fair, the fairness, and be strong.
Thank you, Ms. Adams. Ricardo Adams will be filed by Catherine Caldwell. Mr. Adams will be filed by Catherine Caldwell.
Good evening. I'm here on a couple of issues, on the opt-in, so to speak, policy. I totally oppose, and I have to just keep getting up here saying that. Education is such a big thing, man. It's not like when I was young, man, you could get a high school job, get a high school certificate, and you're good to go. That ain't, you, you can't even compete with just a high school diploma now. You have to really get some college education. So I really don't even want my kids to be considered, talking about no, going in the Army, until they get some college up. You know, get some, the military doesn't need diversity. These colleges around here need some, some diversity. For real. It seems like they're pushing the kids, man, to either jail or, or the military, man. Let them stay and build up our community, man. Our community is tearing down, man. And, and I, and I want to say that, in the area that I grew up in around Lower Street, there were very few good stories, man. You know, there are some good stories about the military, but there are very few in that, from that area when I came up. A lot of them are residents of House of Mercy and stuff now, like that, people that have been there. Just please, consider. Like, if somebody came to your door and knocked, if they don't get an answer, they need to keep moving. That's how the opt-in policy. If, if somebody don't send, send, send back saying, yeah, you could talk to my kids, they need to keep it moving. They should not be able to just assume anything. And in reference to the budget, man, it's, it's, it's so important, man. We need to support these teachers, man. Even right now as we speak, I believe, my daughter, this, the, the, the type of teaching that they're getting now is not as good as it could be if the teachers weren't under the pressure of worrying about, they can't focus, and they have to worry about their job every day. We need to do something, man, with this budget, man. We need to keep these teachers. We probably need some more teachers, not less. Seriously.
Ms. Caldwell will be filed by Sylvia Gosai. Sylvia Gosai.
Good evening. My name's Catherine Caldwell. I'm a member of National Organization for Women and a supporter of Metro Justice. I am here to insist that the school board continue their support of the opt-in process for school military recruitment. As a city resident and a mother, I know that I would need any information necessary to help me make an educational decision about my daughter or female relative joining the military, and so would any other concerned parent. On Tuesday, May 26, I sent all of you on the board an email with facts and my concerns about the continued sexual mistreatment of female recruits and female military personnel. The information that I sent you was certainly only a tip of the iceberg as far as the numbers of incidents. As we all know, only a small percentage of all sexual attacks are reported out of fear and shame. And I am sure that the military environment does not encourage female personnel to report any sexual misconduct out of fear of reprisal. The fact that the military conducts administrative and non-judicial punishment or no action at all instead of criminal prosecutions further indicates the military does not understand the seriousness of the problem and is also mistreating their female personnel. The "Don't Ask, Don't Tell" policy is also a concern and is now still being enforced. This policy further stigmatizes military personnel. I hope that this information helps all of you to make the decision to enforce the opt-in school policy. Thank you.
Sylvia Gosai, I may be mispronouncing that. She will be filed by Ed Vesneski. Ed Vesneski. Seeing that neither of those individuals are present, Kathy Castagna. Kathy Castagna will be filed by Peter Debs.
Thank you. I'm speaking here tonight as a community member who has had three children graduate from the Rochester City School District. I'm also here as someone who has 25 years of work life devoted to both learning and teaching about issues of power and privilege in our society. I've conducted workshops throughout the country on these issues and led a multi-state organizational change diversity program in land-grant universities throughout the United States Department of Agriculture. From my experience and training, I could say with complete certainty that the No Child Left Behind Act is a great example of the invisible hand of institutional racism and classism. Many victims of oppression suffer from the overt act of discrimination and prejudice in the forms of profiling, targeted violence, and ongoing disrespect. However, it is the covert forms done behind closed doors in boardrooms in legislative offices that, in the end, does the greatest damage to the greatest number of people. Legislators who wrote Section 9528 of the Act, the Armed Forces Recruiter Access, knew exactly what they were doing. Institutionally discriminating against the least advantaged in our society, students in poor urban and rural school districts. These are the school districts who are held hostage to the federal government for much-needed Title I money. I don't think that residents of Pittsburgh have even thought about this legislation. Parents of privilege will dutifully sign the opt-out statement, and the school district will confidently know that they could oppose it if they want, because they will have the resources through local tax dollars to more than adequately run their district. This legislation is meant to disadvantage some and benefit others along socioeconomic lines. I am really proud of the Rochester City School District for recognizing the intent of this policy and acting in 2005 to protect the students of our district by not turning over their private information to military recruiters. And I urge you to do the right thing, to not be agents of institutional oppression.
Peter Debs to be filed by Harry Murray. Harry Murray?
Hello, my name's Peter Debs. I taught for 13 years at the Wilson Magna High School. And as a high school teacher, I had the opportunity to continuously, and have to remind myself, that students are not yet adults. They look a lot like adults. They often project themselves as competent and assured. So it's very easy to forget that they're still not quite adults. Most desperately, they want to be accepted, to be smart, and they're too shy or unsure of themselves to advocate for themselves when faced with a convincing adult. They are thus unfair targets for military recruiters, especially when interacting with recruiters without the presence of someone with greater experience and poise who is willing to press for more complete information. I began tabling at various high schools in the city, often on the same days as military recruiters after the war in Iraq was initiated, because I realized how unfair it is to wage a war and not have a draft that puts the burden of sacrifice fairly on everyone. So I am not against military recruiters. They have a job to fulfill. But given that job, it's only natural that those recruiters will paint a rosy picture of what enlisting's all about. The result is that on almost every incident where I worked in a school, and that was four different schools in the district, the level of unawareness of young people about the realities of enlisting was astonishing. Students did not know how the military contract is different from any other contract they'll probably sign in their lives, because it's illegal to quit. Or the abysmal record the military has for assisting veterans with PTSD and other injuries. I collected and laminated articles from our local paper to help them see the reality of this. They did not know that the military has a discriminatory policy towards homosexuals, which is in direct opposition to the district policy. They were astonished at a clause in the small print at the back of Page 1 of the contract which states that anything in the contract can be changed without notice to the applicant. It's my experience that most kids at that age have a fair amount of trust in adults, especially smart-looking people in uniform. Given these factors, I urge the board to support not releasing student information to military without specific parent request. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Debs. Harry Murray to be filed by Vicki Ryder. Vicki Ryder?
I'm the parent of two recent graduates of Wilson High School. I'm here to speak about military recruitment, but I have to affirm those who are opposed to cutting teachers and, and to say that there is a relationship between the two issues. A nation which spends more on its military than every other country combined and, at the same time, is cutting teachers from its city schools, that's obscene. But what I, but what I wanted to tell you is that yesterday, I received a phone call from a military recruiter asking to speak to one of my sons. He said that he knew that my son had gone to Syracuse University and talked about the bad economy, and maybe he'd be interested in military recruitment. I asked where he got this information, and he said, from Wilson. My son was at Wilson both before and after, and during the current policy, so I'm not sure how that information or what information went there, but I do know that my wife and I never gave our consent to give this information to the military, particularly where he was going to the, to the university. And although Syracuse University may well have turned that over to them. What particularly disturbs me is that this call was made just a couple months after my son took a leave of absence from Syracuse. And I wonder whether that was a coincidence or whether that showed up in the databases as well. I, I'm getting this feeling of Big Brother after our kids to recruit them into an organization that's gonna train them to kill. And, and that might sound paranoid, but that's, that's precisely the point. When you have a system with that much power and that much information, we in the, in our local community need to do everything we can to protect our children from abuses of that. And, and so I urge you, not only to reaffirm the current policy, but also to monitor review of the procedures that are being used to find out exact, among other things, exactly what information the schools give to the military when they ask, and how teachers and school personnel are trained about this policy. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Ryder to be filed by Zora Gassau. To be filed by Gary Putnam.
Thank you for this opportunity. I can't help but notice how many people have come here tonight out of the shared and a very deep concern for the young people of our community. I've come as a concerned member of the community also. I was a former training consultant to this district in conflict management and peer mediation. Tonight, I wanted to speak to you about your current policy of protecting our children's right to privacy and to commend you for it, and also for allowing parents to have a say in the decision-making process before handing over students' personal information to predatory military recruiters, as, as we've just heard. I know that the district has been threatened, although not in any official or any legal way, with losing Title I funding if it doesn't adhere to some ambiguous provision of the No Child Left Behind Act that requires the disclosure of student contact information to military recruiters. Now, nobody here tonight is gonna argue that funding for our urban schools is not a very serious problem. Obviously, it is for all of us. I would point out, however, that there are many municipalities that have policies similar to ours with absolutely no loss of funding, not a one. So if this district reverses its current excellent policy because of one unauthorized threat by an overzealous Marine, it would be abandoning, I think, its better judgment to baseless fear. I'm not here to argue whether military service is a good thing or not, or if No Child Left Behind is a good thing or not. That's not what this is about. Right now, under the district's opt-in policy, parents and children together get to decide if they want their contact information given to the military. And if they do, then fine, let the district know that, and the district provides them with the data. But if they don't, then the districts don't get that information from the district. And of course, recruiters still can find the kids who want to pursue a shot in military life. I mean, they have a recruiting center four blocks from here, and believe me, recruiters find our kids whether we want them to or not. I think this district is doing the right thing by making sure that personal information will be disclosed only when parents and children opt in. I implore you to retain your current policy. It is the right thing to do. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Zora Gassau, can you help me make sure I pronounce your name correctly?
Gassau.
Gassau, thank you.
Hi, my name is Zora Gassau. I'm a recent graduate of Rochester City School District. I'm here today to speak out against any proposed changes to the district's policy on releasing students' information. students' information to military recruiters. A change to an opt-out policy compromises students' privacy. Any student who simply forgets to put in a form, and I know I did that a lot in high school, would be subject to aggressive recruitment by military organizations. Once the military has this information, it cannot be taken back, and the student has no control over who has access to their personal information. The district has an obligation to protect its students' privacy. The current policy provides that protection, and any change to it would be a disservice to the students of this wonderful district. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Putup, to be filed by Thomas Gregory Jr. And our last speaker would be Angela Kraus.
Thank you. You know, I can't help but think that, looking at this, that when Tocqueville was here and he saw this, that this is why he couldn't wait to get back to France and explain just the greatness of American democracy. But tonight, Vice President White, Superintendent Bressard, commissioners, my name is Gary Putup. I'm the director of the Genesee Valley Chapter of the New York Civil Liberties Union. I represent 1,500 Rochester residents. I'm here tonight to ask you to retain the essentials of the district policy regarding the reporting of personal student information that protects the privacy rights of district students. We previously submitted a letter generated by our legal staff explaining why the policy is in fact in compliance with federal law. Tonight, I'm here to speak to a fundamental American right: the ability to make an informed affirmative decision as to whether precious personal information is shared for whatever purpose, and it is essential in preserving the right to privacy and the right to make one's own decisions. It is a sacred trust that you, as guardians of the interests and rights of the students of this district, hold fast in protecting those rights. I can tell you this from my position, that this board is looked up to as an example of what a board should be when it comes to this issue by many of my colleagues across the nation. I encourage each and every commissioner to remain true to the principles of this great city's heritage of holding individual freedoms dear and vote to keep the policy that values informed affirmative consent. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Putup. Thomas Gregory, to be filed by Angela Kraus.
Well, for once in my life, I'm glad to be a minority of one, because I'm speaking in favor of the military recruiters and access to directed reinformation. I can't argue against all the arguments that have been raised by many of the people here. I've really spent a lot of time researching this law, and we've had a complete dialogue between the board and myself over a period of time, and I've tried to give them the substantial information. I find a lot of the ideas that have been presented here to be insufficient, in fact, though I understand that this is a government that allows for the expression of our opinion, and much of that has been given. I can say this: my son is an Iraqi veteran, that he came back from Iraq, bitten by a parasite of all things, not with the full metal jacket. That the United States Army has done everything they possibly can to find a position for him, to educate him, and to train him. I said recently, in fact, my last telephone conversation to my son, I said, Jonathan, I want you to know, and this comes from a father to his son, I believe you're a better man than I am. My son's 31 years old, and I think that's a true admission, and it tells us much about the quality of the men and women in uniform. A lot of the concepts that have been raised here, certainly they will be examined. They'll be examined by this board, and they'll be examined by the New York State Department of Education, and they'll be examined by the Secretary of Education, the federal government. And people will look at this, and it actually is a great watershed for developing a discussion, a concept, an idea, a debate. But the truth is, the way the law stands at present, this board is in violation of the law, something that the board also contains within their policy, a statement saying that they will abide by the laws. When they signed the contract and money was given from the federal government through the state of New York to this school board, to this school district, this board knew full well the contingencies, and part of that was just a simple access. Access to be able to ask, would you like to join the military? My son Jonathan is very glad that he did, and as his father, so am I. Thank you very much.
You know, up until this point, the audience has been very respectful, and I'd like to keep it that way, please. Finally, Ms. Kraus?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you all for being here. My name is Angela Kraus. I am an art teacher in the City School District, and I'm concerned about the welfare and rights of our students. I favor a vote to maintain the existing military recruiter policy, because I believe it protects our students' welfare and rights, best as it stands unchanged. I am also against cuts to teaching positions and arts programs, because I believe they are an injustice against our students as well. We must challenge and resist changes that permit economic discrimination. Targeting urban students for military recruitment and leveraging their personal information to protect Title I funding is criminal and discriminatory. Likewise, cutting teachers is a fiscal penalty imposed upon the disadvantaged, which virtually ensures they remain hostage to the class boundaries. Isn't it wrong to connect Title I funding to military recruitment? We need to oppose this military attempt to take advantage of our students, because it is an infringement on their rights. Isn't it also an injustice to limit the exposure to the arts? For some students, eliminating arts classes altogether? This does not meet the needs of all students and does not provide free and equal education when compared to other districts in our county. Doesn't it sound like leaving some children behind? We must ensure that the quality of education we provide for our students is not only equal, but also that it is fair. For students to build the necessary empowering critical thinking skills, teachers, arts, and opportunities are essential. With these skills, our children will be prepared to make informed choices about their futures with the assistance and consent of their families and without discriminatory recruiter pressures. Please protect the welfare and rights of our students. Vote to maintain the existing opt-in military recruiter policy and reconsider making unacceptable, unjust cuts to the teaching positions and art programs. Thank you.
Now, at this particular point, I can say what I began to say, which is a thank you to the speakers for respecting the two-minute time limit. I think everybody did that with diligence, and I appreciate that. I also want to thank the members of the audience for showing courtesy and respect to the speakers. At this particular point, we are to receive the superintendent's report. He has asked the members of the board to take a seat in front, because I think there's going to be a presentation on the screen.
My side? Great. Good evening, commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. This feels like, I guess, church on Christmas Eve. So those of you guys who don't come to board meetings regularly, welcome back or welcome. Hopefully, we'll see you every month. Before I actually start, just want to pay homage to one individual, Dr. Michael Loughlin, super of Monroe Buses Two, who passed away last week suddenly. Was a friend, colleague, tremendous educator, a real supporter and partner to our City School District. So if you did not hear, it was in the DNC last week, I believe, last week. His funeral is actually tomorrow, so want to pay homage to him. The second thing I want to say before I actually get into the presentation is this whole piece on military. Just want to say that my only job initially was to highlight the discrepancies in our policies and perhaps the law. I tell people I don't have a horse in this race. My goal, my only job, is to make sure I follow what is supposed to be followed. I believe you're fighting the wrong battle here, the wrong place. My suggestion is that if you do not like what NCLB says, we have a new administration, we have a new secretary, please send your letters to Arnie Duncan. Many of you talk about the fact that this law was written to address black and brown kids in urban centers. I totally agree. But the fact is that the way we read the law, we have to come to consensus to exactly what we're supposed to be doing. So my only piece is that you should be marching on Washington, perhaps on Rochester, but we'll get onto the presentation. You've heard quite a bit of talk about teacher cuts, about budget, quite a bit of things pulling on heartstrings. And I'll tell you, when we have young people come and talk, first, I love hearing young people talk, but the fact is that, let's talk about the real numbers here and the real facts before we make assumptions to exactly what is happening in our City School District. We actually have some schools who are increasing the arts, but we don't hear about that. But we'll talk about that, I guess, another time. We talk about the fact that everything we do is about kids and focus on kids, and I'm going to ask for your attention. You may not agree with everything I say, but I'm going to present to you with facts and numbers and exactly what is the real situation, and you can make your own determination as to what should be happening. So everything we do is about kids. I always start my presentation with these two slides, because I want to bring us back to the fundamental work of educating young people. We walked in with three core values. Again, I always talk about that, because achievement, it's equity, and it's accountability. Three pieces, I think, have been somewhat lacking in our district. And the middle one, we've got quite a bit of work to do, and I'll present you with some slides on that. Just as a reminder, for those of you guys who may not have been here, we received $13.4 million in Deficit Reduction Act, what some call the stabilization fund, from the state of New York by way of the federal government. Arnie Duncan, the secretary himself, says, don't just stabilize, innovate. We expected a little bit more in federal stimulus from Title I IDA. We got a bit less than that. So this was part of my presentation on the budget, I believe, a few weeks ago. Before the stimulus, we predicted a $61 million budget deficit. You may remember the headline from the DNC, about 500 positions were in jeopardy of being cut in the City School District. I'm glad to say that is not the case. We lobbied our colleagues in the feds and colleagues in Albany quite hard to help us reduce responsibly over time. Some of you guys may know that I am on the executive committee for the American Association of School Administrators. As the governing body of the organization that looks at school administrators over the country, it's 160 years old. So we talked to folks like Arnie Duncan and others to please allow us to backside, to slide down responsibly, not to shock systems, where we've had an inverse relationship between, I guess, spending and revenue, but we'll talk about that as we go along as well. We started back in January with a budget projection of $669.6 million, ended after the stimulus and the stabilization with a budget of $699.4 million. I know some folks talk about losing Title I funding. I believe one of our young students talked about $5 million. By the way, that number is in excess of $50 million. So if we lost that, it's about 750 positions in the district. So think about what that means to us as an urban school system. The New York Times had an article, May 14, that talked about the challenges of using stimulus, looking at reductions across the state. And here on the screen, I have two quotes, one from the Westchester-Putnam School Board Association, the other one from the superintendent of Mount Vernon Schools, Tony Sawyer. And I'll read just the first one to you. Says, you're supposed to use it to supplement, not supplant. You cannot use Title I funding to supplant. You cannot use it to replace, you have to add to what you already have. You can use it to save jobs, but make sure you don't do anything that has your district falling off a cliff in two years when the funds run out. What Arnie Duncan refers to as the funding cliff, in terms of looking at the stimulus money, because in two years, folks, it will disappear. I know at one of our budget deliberations, we talked about fund balance, and one of our young people here talked about my personal staff, I guess, being, was it $6 million? We'll talk about that, too. The actual fund balance, the reserve, if you will, is actually about $41 million, but 86% of that money is accounted for. Means we cannot touch. We are self-insured in some cases, so we have to put money into what are called EPI funding and a number of other places that we have to pay for, including retirement benefits, et cetera. The actual, undesignated fund is $6.7 million. If you are a financial person in this audience, you know that having a reserve of 1% is not a good thing. California actually requires that districts have a 2% reserve in their fund. New York City allows us to go as high as 4%. We have 1%. If something tragic happens to this district next year, we will not be able to make payroll. Think about that. We cannot pay teachers their salaries. Think about the ramifications if a school catches on fire, if something tragic happens. This year, for instance, we had an arbitration to pay master's payments to a number of our teachers that erased, completely wiped out, our fund balance this year, where we had to freeze travel, freeze a number of different things, just to be able to make payroll for the end of the school year. I cannot, in good conscience, put us in that situation. When you take a look at the train enrollment in this district, going back to the '05-'06 school year to this current school year, you see an inverse relationship between the number of teachers we have in the district and number of kids we have in the district. We've not been responsible, ladies and gentlemen, for the past few years as to how we hire. Much of it has to do with our own operations, the central office, and the way we actually staff schools. We've not done the right work to make that actually happen quite well. Want to give you a series of slides that looked at the kind of work we did to come to these conclusions. We actually contracted with a group called ERS, Education Resources Strategies. If you remember last, about 18 months ago, when I came in, I believe my first 90 days, we talked about tracing every dollar. We talked about finding out where we're spending money to become much more fiscally responsible. I had a lot of advice from people within the city and from the state of New York when I was coming in, and telling me that we have a structural deficit in the City School District. Please address it. It is a matter of time before you fall off a cliff, because we have a system where we expect more money every year. If you talk to your elected politicians, talk to your senators and assemblymen, they'll tell you that in the Big Four, many parts of the Big Four, New York State, we've come to expect more money every year just to maintain the same level of services. If you're in business, that is not something you want to do. But this slide shows you that compared to other major cities in America, we spend quite a bit more money per capita, per student than others. So as a state, we are very well-funded, and I thank our elected officials regularly for the funding we give our schools in New York. If you look at our colleagues in California, what they're facing, and other states, what they're facing, the one data point I use with a lot of people is that if you take a look at a similar district in California, one in Pomona School District, the head of that school district just became the appointed deputy secretary for education for the US of AID. She's got 31,000 students, we've got 33,000 students. Her budget is 50% that of our City School District, 50%. Her achievement is better. So when you look at this, it did quite well for us. But the reason it's so expensive is because of this. We've got some of the best student-teacher ratios going in America. Again, now this is a bad thing, it's a good thing. But the bottom line is, when you have a fiscal crisis, you have to begin to take a look at where, you begin to step away a little bit. We still want to have great class size, we still want to have great ratios, but we could not sustain and afford what we were doing. Last year as well, when I walked into the district, this was one of the slide presentations I gave in my first 16-90 day presentation to the Board of Education, at the U of R, to the public, as well as a number of other meetings I attended, this was my justification to begin to push people that we had to downsize central office. We had a huge bureaucracy in this building. We took a first stab at it last summer. We reduced by over 100 positions in this building. The noise, we didn't have a protest, but the noise was deafening. It was very, very loud. In fact, I believe I was attacked when I was on my honeymoon. All kinds of flies, et cetera, was being circulated, because we're looking to reduce central office. And I can tell you, the work here is not done. We took perhaps a meat cleaver last summer, now we have to use a scalpel to begin to take a look at the work in terms of reducing the central office. I often joke that perhaps we need about 25 people in this building to really be an agile organization. Again, I'm joking, because it might be slightly higher than that, but the bottom line is, we've got... we've got to still reduce central office, but we took a big stab at this last summer. So the rhetoric about us not looking at administrators is completely false. When you take a look at student-teacher ratios across New York, on the screen you have Albany, Binghamton, Buffalo, Syracuse, Yonkers, Utica, et cetera. We've got, this was oh-six, oh-seven, New York State data produced by Syracuse School District. We had the best ratio in all the mid-sized and small cities in New York State, but we did not have the best graduation rate. In fact, we had the worst graduation rate in New York, all the cities. When you take a look at the amount of spending we do, again, of central office, another slide that shows us compared to others across the country, we do spend more at central office, but there are reasons for that. One, a lot of our funding is attached to this building. When you take a look at association dues that we pay, it's about a hundred thousand dollars a year. Our internal standards office is about two hundred twenty thousand dollars a year. When you take a look at board of ed staff, leadership staff, et cetera, when you take a look at full-time releases for our union members, all of our bargaining units, that drives over one point six million dollars out of our coffers into other places. So we've got work to do, folks, in a number of different places. The question often is, do we have the will to do what needs to be done? We take a look at how much we spend for supervision, that big yellow sign here, oops, excuse me, what did I do? That big yellow line here is our supervision, that's school-based as well as central office-based. The one, perhaps, work that we're doing is that the ASAR bargaining unit has been working with us and trying to address this, and I thank Vicki Gubia and the leadership team for engaging us and actually doing this work sensibly over time. Moving forward, back in November, in our analyses, we discovered that there were wide varieties in resources among schools in the district. We found schools that were funded at about nine thousand dollars per student, others at about seventeen thousand dollars per student. So huge inequities across the system, one thing we've been referring to as horizontal equity in the system, something we have to address. We took a stab at it this year, and the budget book is very transparent. You begin to see the disparities, we have to address that quite a bit. Looking at even ratios and how we allocated schools in the past, I'll give you two examples. School number nine has a ratio of thirteen students per teacher. This is this past year. School twenty-three had twenty-one point seven students per teacher. Inequities that we have to address. Yes, perhaps one school has a greater need, but we need to be able to be objective as to why a school is getting more and one is getting less, but right now, I can tell you, we did not do that very well for a very long time. When you take a look at what we do in terms of staffing, because of inaccurate projections in enrollment and our own staffing issues that we've had in the past, we actually overhired a hundred eighty-one teachers this school year in the district because of that. We have a habit of projecting teachers per students. Come September, we do not go back and take a look. So we've never had a system where we continuously look at how we're funding schools, how we're allocating students to schools. We spend more, again, on gen ed than most other places around the country. Let's take a look at this one very quickly. Take a look at our staffing formula. Compared to Boston, Baltimore, Charlotte, not Charlotte, but Charlotte, actually, I'm becoming more and more Rochesterian, I guess. When you take a look at that, you see the yellow shows you the Rochester numbers. Grade five is one to twenty-two, kindergarten one to twenty. Other cities, one to twenty-two in kindergarten, one to twenty-two in Baltimore, for instance. When you take a look at our high schools in the bottom, we actually were funding our high schools one to eighteen. And I actually have the numbers here, shows you school by school, this year's projection ratio and next year's projection. Let me give you some examples. In kindergarten, we're currently a twenty to one ratio, we're looking to go twenty-one point one ratio, that's one student. In fifth grade, it's going to go from twenty-two to twenty-five. In third grade, it's remaining the same. In second grade, it's going up by two. In our high schools, school number three, for instance, is going from sixteen to one to seventeen to one. Charlotte, eighteen to nineteen. The Edison complex is remaining exactly the same. Foundation Academy, for instance, fifteen point five to seventeen to one. If you ask me, that should be reversed, right? The lower numbers should be in the elementary, the higher numbers in the high school. Most districts, including Syracuse, everyone else does it that way. That, if you look at the research, the biggest impact for small class size is in the early grades. In our district, we have it reversed. But the bottom line is, when you look at others, we still have a fantastic ratio. Let me give you one example. Today, talking to my colleague in Syracuse, again, he's bumping up, by the way, by about two across the board in the high schools by more than that, to, again, provide the savings to do what he has to do to balance his budget. But in Syracuse, the elementary K to three, between twenty and twenty-two to one, they try and do nineteen as much as possible. And four to six is twenty-three and twenty-four to one, which is higher than us, again. In secondary, twenty-five to twenty-six compared to nineteen or eighteen, in some cases seventeen in our district. So when you look at that, you begin to see us compared to places like Syracuse. In New York City, look at the high school, twenty-six point two to one, the elementary twenty-one point two, which is much more comparable to what we have to one. So we still have some of the better ratios in New York. In doing the allocation, one thing principals had to weigh and struggle with was, do you look at reducing perhaps the core a little bit or lose electives? And principals tried hard not to lose electives. And I can tell you, some of the decisions around even art music were painful for some of our schools, but some classes had four kids, three kids in the classroom, and I can tell you that was not sustainable. Let me just give you some numbers quickly around special ed. And by the way, we did not really address this for this coming budget year, but it is something we need to talk about. In the council's report, they said that we had so many people in special ed, not just teachers, but so many people in special ed were creating confusion in our special ed program. But take a look at the following. We spent twice as much on special ed than we do on gen ed across our district. This is the achievement between special ed students in our district and regular ed in our district. The green is regular, the red is special needs. Look at the difference between a child who's classified special ed and those who are not, and I can tell you that we over, over, I'll say it one more time, over-classify kids in special ed. We inching toward nineteen percent in special ed. That is ridiculous, and it's something we have to begin to push back and address. When you take a look at achievement in special ed compared to special ed across New York State, the blue is New York, the red is Rochester. This is special ed, special ed. Although we spend more than anybody else, we don't have the results in special ed. So the number of individuals is not always the answer. Let me just tell you one piece here. We actually have classrooms in our high schools, eight-one-twos, that have more adults than students. We can't sustain that, folks. We take a look at, again, the spending that we do in special ed. This is disaggregated by gen ed, LEP. Look at how much we spend for kids who are bilingual, who are English language learners, as compared to kids who are, say, out of district in special education. You begin to see the inequities in the system. Again, we spend twice as much in special ed than most of the large urban districts across the country. Even the District of Columbia, Washington, D.C., that has a very high student per capita allocation, we spend more than they actually do. Take a look at the ratio of our special ed students to special ed teachers as compared to others. We're not only, by the way, the national average is sixteen, we are half that. So again, we're not looking to go to sixteen, but we can go to nine, couldn't we? Right? I don't think we'd make that much of a difference, especially given the fact that the achievement does not match the amount of money we actually are spending. But two last slides, three last to show you. One, taking a look at actually how we staff integrated setting classes. Say we have a class that can take twelve students, which is what the model calls for, and when you take a look at this, you see that about only sixty-four percent of our classrooms have met the requirement, more than are not, are below the actual size limit. Ninety-nine percent of our integrated settings classes are below, are under-enrolled. We're not looking to maximize class size, so what you hear is actually not true, but the bottom line is, we need to bump the numbers a little bit so we can begin to look at the kinds of responsible savings that we need to do. Folks, the best class size is a one-to-one, but despite the large funding we get from the state of New York, we don't have the funding to sustain this. And we've already been told by New York State to expect flat or reduction for next year. We have, one of our insurance companies have always told us by July one, they're going to increase our rates mid-year. We don't always plan for that because we expect increases beginning of the calendar year, but we're told this year it's going to happen in July, which is something that will deplete our fund reserve. So we're making the best decisions possible to make this happen. I can tell you that my job rests on the fact that achievement has to go up in this district, so it would be perhaps asinine or crazy or stupid to do things that would negate that. We have had record gains in literacy in some of the more crowded schools in the district. I believe the same numbers will come out from mathematics. You'll see a bump in graduation rate as well. So we are on an upward move, and I can tell you that it doesn't have to do with the number of people in the classroom, but the quality of the people in the classroom and the quality of our leaders in our schools. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent, do you have anything further to add to your report?
Perhaps just a note about the Franklin Campus Commission, if you'd like to start.
Yeah, we, folks don't know how much work actually takes place behind the scenes, and you get really very little sense of the board's work just by coming to this meeting, although we really do appreciate your presence. As many of you know, there was a resolution put forward by the superintendent and his team to phase out Franklin, two of the three high schools at Franklin, and through a collaborative process that we, as a board, must really thank the superintendent and his staff, we were able to agree that at this particular point, that is not the right thing for the Franklin campus. There's much work to be done. There is much work to be done on this issue, and we have the greatest confidence in the superintendent and his team to make sure that school becomes a crown jewel for this district and something that we can look back and say, "Look what collaboration does."
And just to add to that, Commissioner, we met with the principals last week, made sure they understood that this was not done out of pressure, but a collaborative effort, and they truly understand that they have to change culture and they have to change and move their numbers quite rapidly, otherwise, you know, we're still in trouble with the state of New York. They understand quite, quite well the calamity that can happen if they don't move the numbers over the next year or two.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Does that conclude your report?
Yes.
Thank you. Now, we move on to that portion of the agenda where we cover board reports. Commissioner Williams, do you have a report from audit?
Yes. The recessed audit committee meeting of the whole met on April seventh, and resumed on May fifth at five-thirty to continue the discussion of the Office of the Audit General's capital projects audit report and the process for receiving completed management discussions. We also discussed the forward request process and the external candidates for the audit committee. We will review the resumes for the external candidates that have been received and will make recommendations to the upcoming audit committee meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Can we get our student report, representative report?
Yes. First, I just want to touch on an issue that I've heard come out of this room tonight, and for the past few days, I've been talking to some of my friends, and I think as far as the teacher cuts, it really has hit home for a lot of people. Being a student, I think I've made a lot of bonds with a lot of staff that have, either have, are going to be displaced next year or don't have a job in the district anymore. And it's hard for a lot of us because the bond doesn't carry out. But for those of you who do know me, I'm a music person, and it really hurts me that in the arts especially, a lot of students express themselves through art and music and their talents, and it just, it frustrates me to the fact that music has become a way of a child's expression, and when they, when, you know, it's just in the point of frustration, that's what I can turn to. And a lot of it, that's the message that we send out is music is me. So I just wanted to express to everybody that I really feel how you feel about the cuts with the arts department. My next is obviously good news. I always like to give out good news. First, I want to thank the superintendent and Connie Leach especially, she's not here, and my city of Rochester staff for coming out on May twelfth for the giveaway, the home library giveaway at school number twenty-two. Each third grader was able to walk away with a bookshelf and a book, and a bookshelf and a set of books based on their reading level and gender-based. Each child has a home library, they're reading at home, and we hope that this program will eventually end up going district-wide to all schools. The next thing is video cameras and extra staff will be on buses next school year, just to limit whether there's chaos on the bus or, you know, to limit the complaints that people have made about buses. And my other announcement is the annual Title I Parent Conference is Saturday, June thirteenth, at the downtown Radisson Hotel, nine to three P.M. The theme is celebrating families working together for student achievement. For more information, you can call two-six-two, eight thousand extension eleven ninety. And of course, Student Leadership Congress met yesterday for their last community service project of the year. SLC went over to school number twenty-two to read to the students in the Baden Street After School Program. SLC's next moves are to record a public service announcement relating to young people about how important it is to attend school and the rewards that come out of attending school. June seventeenth, SLC will wrap up their year by reflecting and sharing our memories through a celebration here at central office. And June eighteenth, SLC will report out to the board and everybody else about how their year was and be recognized. That completes my report.
Thank you. Commissioner Powell?
Yes, the Finance Committee met Thursday, May twenty-first to review the April financial reports, student activity funds for the third quarter, and resolutions eight-twenty through eight-forty-five. The first thing that the committee did was to approve the monthly financial reports and advances them to the full board for approval. I move at this time that the board approve the April financial report.
Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, that report is approved.
Thank you. The quarterly student activity funds report also requires that the board approve it or receive it, so the committee did advance it with its recommendation. At this time, I move that the student activity funds report be received by the full board.
Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
Second. I have a question on that, because I thought it must have been early this year, the administration sent out a letter which was, which directed all of the schools to terminate student activity.
Not all schools, only elementary schools are, in fact, are required to cease and desist their ice cream funds and their student funds.
But we're still...
Because the point of a student activity funds is that it be student-led, and elementary school students are presumed not to be responsible enough to do that.
But we still have a report.
Well, they have to be closed out, the funds have to be disposed of. That isn't to say that they're raising more monies, it just means that the funds have not been ultimately disposed of either by their student bodies or principals in accordance with the expectations of their original charter.
Okay. I don't want to belabor the point, but if you look at the reports for this month, at least this quarter, there's still activity going on in the...
Ice cream funds.
For the ice cream funds.
Trustee, you want to? No? Commissioner, would you like us to add more to that? No?
No. Just in the interest of time, we could take it offline.
Okay.
All those in favor of approving and advancing that report, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose, that report is passed on to the board. Any further report from...
Yes, the resolutions that were con... Yes, the resolutions that were considered, resolutions 841 and 842 had to do with HR initiatives. Resolutions 836 through 838 were procurement. 843 through 845 were information management. 820 through 834 were facilities, mostly final payments. And resolutions 339 through 840 were Office of Administration. We did table resolution 835, which was a lease for the Holy Apostle Church, the renewal of the lease. There was some concern about the initial conditions that when we, when we leased it last year to use for the I'm Ready program, there were certain assumptions made about where the city was going to be locating net offices and other matters that related to the security and safety of the neighborhood. The Finance Committee did have significant concerns. And to the credit of our parent representative, Felix Jacobs, was able to give us an idea of exactly what those conditions were. We asked that the administration give us more information to the Finance Committee. And because the lease renewal does not have to happen until about July 1, we have the luxury of time to be able to review this. And we are getting, we have an open invitation to tour the facility from Jerome Watts, the, the administrator over there. We did make a significant financial investment in this, even though it's leased property because the state holds us to higher standard for, for our physical plant than it holds the parochial schools and charter schools for that matter. So we did table one of the resolutions, everything in the packet, everything that remains in the board resolution packet was approved by the Finance Committee and recommended for the full board approval.
Thank you.
One more thing, our last, our next Finance Committee meeting, a regular scheduled meeting, June 18, which is the Thursday before our regular board business meeting.
It appears that we are going to go beyond our 8:30 time slot. Our bylaws require, now this is a mere formality, folks, that we have a motion to extend the time beyond 8:30. Can I get such a motion?
I move that we stay up past our bedtime.
Second.
At some point, we've got to change that.
Yeah, I agree. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. The next committee, are you, are you finished, Commissioner Powell?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next committee report is my committee. I am the chair of the Excellence and Student Achievement Committee. That committee met on Tuesday, May the 26 at 5:40 PM. A presentation by the administration was made regarding the purchase of math textbooks for grade six through nine from Holt McDonald relating to resolution 846, which is a part of your packets. The committee, which consisted of Commissioner Campos, Commissioner Williams and myself, we recommended that this resolution be approved by the board. I should note that great work was done to make this presentation and to identify the appropriate publisher and textbooks for our mathematics in our schools. And I would like to thank Saul Noto, the executive director of the Mathematics Department, Colleen Murphy, who apparently is a Holt representative, Luana Andrews, secondary lead teacher, Denise Schultz, who is an elementary lead teacher, Nyree Strong, who is the director of African, African American Studies. Someone help me out here. Yelena Mel, come on, there's somebody out there. Marilyn?
Alan?
Want to help me? It's Elena M E L N I C H E N Keo. I, there's no way I'm going to try that. Melneke, is she here? Well, thank you anyways. Robbie Hedges, Deja Brooks and Amanda Mora, a student, both of those young folks are students at our schools. And finally, I want to thank Marilyn Patterson Grant, the deputy superintendent of teaching and learning. This is her department. And again, she and her staff did an excellent job in presenting this, this resolution to us. Our next meeting will be held on June the 11th at 5:30 PM. Unfortunately, Commissioner Elliott is not feeling well today. She was not able to attend. I have the honor of presenting her committee report. I'd ask for your indulgence. It's a rather, rather lengthy report, but I want to stay true to her, the information she wanted to share with you all. The Policy Committee met on Tuesday, May the 19 to review and discuss the following items. The student arrest policy. A recent letter from the superintendent, from Superintendent Bazzard has indicated that student arrests have increased significantly. And members of the Policy Committee have requested a report from the administration at the next policy meeting on June the 16. This report is to provide data on a monthly basis for each school to indicate the circumstances of the arrests in the individual who called in law enforcement authorities so that, bless you.
Thank you.
So that a clearer understanding can be obtained regarding the starting point, trends and specific school leaders authorizing these practices. To gain further perspective and to elevate this issue within the community, the Policy Committee also plans to conduct a public hearing regarding the prevalence and impact of arrests on students and their families. Proposed bilateral resolution, the Policy Committee decided to form a task force to craft language for a bilateral resolution between the Board of Education and the Rochester City, City Council to allow city council representation on the Finance Committee and the Audit Committee, contingent upon city council approving a measure to establish an education committee with board representation. The Policy Committee is beginning work with Erie One Boses to update the policy manual and will be scheduling a meeting with an attorney to assign to this project. The next Policy Committee meeting will be held on June the 16, 2009 at 6:30 PM and will address attendance policy, board staff policy, and a policy proposal to establish a requirement that the children of the Rochester City School District employees attend a district school. That concludes the report of the Policy Committee. Commissioner Campos?
The Community and Intergovernmental Relations Committee unfortunately could not meet because of a lack of acquorum, which was on May 12. And we are going to be focusing on June 9 instead on student wellness, especially it's very timely with everything with the school lunches. And also, there's a lot of working parts that are in the district in terms of student wellness. So it allows us as a board to be able to get, wrap our arms around what we're doing here as a district because there are correlations between wellness and student achievement. And that's why we're here. So I do want to thank Gladys, Sandy and Carlos, who are all ready to present, and we look forward to their presentation on June 9 at 5:30.
Thank you.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan?
No report.
Thank you. All right. That takes us to consideration of resolutions. But before we do that, the superintendent and I were, had an opportunity to speak very briefly about something that he wanted to add to his report to the community and to the board.
Sure. Again, quite a bit of talk about over 200 teachers getting pink slips or being laid off. And I've said this publicly before, we take exception to, to, to the language of layoffs. We're looking to make our cuts as much attrition as possible. While the numbers are still very fluid, and I want, underline the word fluid, because we're still in the midst of staffing the district for the fall and looking at projections. But as of this week, we only have about 94 people still in that place in schools. So we hope that once we get all the retirements and everything else, that the numbers of people who will not be placed will be a very, very, very small number. But we're trying very hard to not have anyone be on the street without a position, without a job. We know what it does to families. We know what we're trying to do. We need to, I know I've used the word right size, we need to do that. But at the same time, also need to try to protect people's, I guess, livelihood as much as possible. We have to bring our numbers down. We're doing everything we can to make sure people don't get pink slips. So the idea of 200 people being laid off is completely inaccurate. So please, when you hear that, ask for the right kinds of information, look to see what the reality actually is. Again, it's still fluid, it's May. We have folks who don't tell us to retire until late August, sometimes even beginning of September. But we lose, and I've said this before publicly, we lose on average about 300 teachers a year in this district who resign, retire, et cetera. So even a cut of 200 would mean us hiring teachers. In fact, I was talking to a colleague the other day, a mom who was very proud of her daughter just graduated college, who got a contract and a job with the city school district. So it doesn't really make a lot of sense for people to talk about us giving pink slips when in fact, when the, at the end of the day, the net will actually be us offering new positions. But again, there'll be a reduction in workforce, but we're looking as much as possible to make that through attrition.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Now we move to that portion of our agenda that some of you may not be familiar with. We have a whole packet of what we call resolutions. They are basically proposals put forward by the administration on a number of different areas. We look at them in separate areas, human resources, educational facilities, procurement and supply, information technology, and then we have this group called OTHER. To, to make the business of the board work more efficiently and effectively, we group them together and we, we try as, as much as possible to vote on them as a group. I should tell you all that you may not possess this information right now, but all of this information, and I, I can be corrected by my colleagues and district staff if I'm wrong about this, all this information is on the district website. Is that right? Yes. Additionally, I should note, and maybe I should ask the superintendent, the report that you gave earlier on, that the, the PowerPoint presentation, is that on the website as well?
No, stop, but we certainly can put it up.
That would be very helpful because I'm sure many people would like to backtrack and look at that information at a different pace. So we'll make sure that that is on the website for you. But more to the business at hand, we have a series of resolutions. Let's first deal with the Human Resources Resolution. I should tell you all, we were running a few minutes late this, this evening because we were considering in executive session, some particulars regarding these human resource resolutions. We are not allowed to by law to discuss the details of anyone's employment. And so a commissioner had some questions that required detailed answers. We had to by law to discuss them in executive session. Now comes the time to vote on these particular resolutions. The first set of resolutions, once again, are human resource resolutions. They are resolutions 783 to 819, 863, 865 and 866. Can I have a motion to approve these particular resolutions?
Still moved.
I have a motion from Commissioner Campos. Can I get a second to that motion?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Powell. We can now have discussion on these resolutions. Is there any discussion?
One comment.
Yes, sir.
And that's on resolution 804. Although there are quite a few pieces to it, the, the piece I want to speak to is on the 2 million minute documentary. And just a suggestion that although you want to create a, a PDP for, for the faculty, I would strongly recommend that they be shown to the students, especially to eighth graders at the end of the very three, at the end of the year, and then to the ninth graders, probably two, even three times a year. And then again, to 10th, 11th and 12th graders, because it really crystallizes to the students.
That's, that's the plan.
Okay.
To share the students, educate them. And to get a, to get a.
Okay, thank you. And to the board members who may or may not have seen that documentary, it really outlines what we are, what our students are up against from a global perspective.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Any other comments or questions about those resolutions? Yes, Commissioner Campos?
I have one comment. I just wanted to congratulate the superintendent in selecting a fantastic principal for East High. I think that he is going to do an amazing job. He's got a lot of energy and a lot of passion, so.
And if I, Annabelle, are you here? I'm sure you're here, right? Stand up. If I, if I'm, if I may, I put him on the spot a little bit. Annabelle is actually a doctoral candidate at the University of Rochester, a phenomenal young man who's going to bang up job at East High School.
And an East High grad.
In East High, went to East High, graduated. He corrected me last week. He went to East High School, didn't graduate from East, went to, Annabelle, what school did you graduate from? Okay.
Any further questions or comments, Commissioner Powell? No? Mr. Brennan? Nope.
I just wanted to congratulate you.
Congratulate who? Oh, okay, all right. So can I?